Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Glendale City Council Workshop Session of April 26, 2022. This meeting is called to order. I'm not going to call a roll call. We have one member that has an excused absence, Vice Mayor Adama. Everywhere, everyone else is present. If you could take note of that, I'd appreciate it. Today, we're going to actually take item number three and have that presented first instead of item number one. So if you're doing your math and we go to three first and then two and then one, don't get confused. Anyway, Ms. Burr, would you introduce item number three for us, please?
Crystal Lagoon's Progress Update Presentation.
Good morning, good afternoon now, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity. As you know, I don't generally do a lot of presentations to this body. It's done by staff who are more capable than myself, but I'm going to go ahead and lead the presentation on this today. And so, very excited to introduce this next topic. And so, today, it was announced earlier this morning that the former project that we refer to internally here as the Lagoon Project has officially gone public with the name of the new project that we're seeing going up in front of our eyes. And so today, we welcome Vi Resort. I think we've got a picture here coming up on this. Who's running the? I think they thought I could handle AV and talk at the same time, and that's probably not the case. So here's the, here's a latest update in terms of the Vi Resort. We're excited about this. It continues to kind of carry on some of the earlier themes of water. And so this was, we'll go to the next slide. We'll show you kind of the nighttime interior shot. You can see off to the right under the words Vi. You can see the, that's part of the stage element. You can see there are some columns going up there on the left that are flames. But this is just an exciting project that's kind of coming out of the ground. So just as a matter of familiarity, go back and we can kind of look at the, you know, kind of where this started, the background on this. We'll show you the site here, obviously just south of Cardinals Way on 95th. The area in red was the initial site that was acquired for the development. We'll be addressing the items that are in yellow here, here in a few minutes, but that, of course, is the actual site. The, again, you know, the original early concept, again, it was kind of conceptual, but it was a development, experiential type of development built in and around a, essentially a man-made lake with beaches and access to the water. And it continues to flow along that concept, but as you can imagine, this project continues to evolve and to add more detail, more sophistication, more exciting elements really as it goes forward. If you think back to June of 2020, when we announced this project, I think I can speak for all of us, we were incredibly excited about, about this project. What I can tell you is, sitting here today in, in April of 22, is that, that I think we have reason to be even more excited. Sometimes you set the bar high and, and things under kind of come in less than what you were hoping for. In this case, I think what you're going to learn is that this project continues to evolve and get better and better. And so I think it's very exciting for our community. We'll show you some progress pictures that are here. Again, you can see the, the main hotel structure on the northwest corner of the site, but if you look at the lower corner, you can see the below-grade parking and infrastructure for the additional part of the hotel is underway there. And again, here's a better, kind of a better picture. You can see how the resort stair steps down. The, the structure on the right-hand side is the kind of capping off level, and then the, the new structure going up to the left will be the same height. And then it will be, it will mimic the structure on the right, on the left-hand side, that work's being done as well. And eventually you'll kind of have this, the main structure will be a U-shaped, kind of flanged U-shaped structure, and so that continues to move on. Here's a picture from a little bit kind of farther, more towards the southerly end of the site. And in kind of, you can see then the hotel on the left, the forms are starting to get above ground for the, what will be kind of, there's, there's the main hotel and then two adjunct buildings that are part of the main hotel. If you kind of think about it, the example I would give you would be the Phoenician, you know, has a main hotel, and then they've got other structures on the property that are incorporated. And this is very much the same kind of model, is you'll have the, the main center hotel where all the lobbying and check-in is at, but you'll also have additional rooms located. And so you can see on the left-hand side, they're also starting to get above ground for that portion of it. The, so we're going to be looking, and here's a final picture. Again, they're just, every day, things are changing out there. As a reminder, there is a live webcam that you can go to, or the public can go to, to kind of track the, the daily progress that's happening. Today is an informational update, but we are going to be asking for some, some just general consensus and making sure we're going the right direction. So the first thing we want to talk about is the Amendment to the Development Agreement. And so, in that, there's a couple of things that we need to kind of freshen up. One, we originally had a projected timeline of roughly December of '22 for opening. We were all, of course, pushing to try to have the project completed in time for the Super Bowl that'll be happening in February of '23. As you can imagine, however, this project has grown significantly. Originally, it was 630 hotel rooms. As announced today, in their release today, is they, they now are north of 1,200 rooms for this project. It is now the largest hotel property in the state of Arizona. And as I kind of jokingly said, to be the largest hotel in North Dakota is one thing. To be the largest hotel project in Arizona, one of the strongest states in the country for tourism, and is known for its quality projects, hotel accommodations, to be the largest in the state of Arizona is saying something. And so we couldn't be more excited for how this project has continued to grow. So the first thing we'll need to do is to, is to modify the project timeline. And our thought is, we would just remove the timeline altogether. We think now it's going to be more like a late spring of '23 for the completion. But from day one, I felt it was more important for the project to evolve and to be the kind of quality, game-changing kind of a project. That was more important than a date on a calendar. And, and so, they, they continue to just add elements that are going to add more excitement to this project, but that means re, you have to redesign, you have to change your schematics. It just slows the process down. So our first thing we want to do is remove the, the project timeline. There's also been a, a change in, in ownership, although Vi Resort has been involved in the project since almost the very beginning. So when Glenn first came with the concept, they worked with, with Glenn and were, were providing a variety of value back to him, including, you know, helping with, I understand, a good, large part of the financing, but also acting as the contractor in many areas to do the, the general construction. They, over time, as this project has evolved, felt it was in the best interest of all the parties to do a change in ownership, and so Vi Resort now is the, we'll need to change that, indicate that on our development agreement. The, Glenn, who, Bilbo, is still very involved with the Mattel Project, which too has grown considerably since the original announcement. I think the first schematic concepts had the Mattel Project in around 79,000 square feet on the main structure. We believe it to be now north of 130,000 square feet, and they've added other programming elements to the Mattel side. So again, that project is all part of the Vi Resort, but Glenn is still involved in that on the, on moving that forward. The next thing is the, is a recognition of the live events. There's going to be a lot of programming of events taking place on that site, and we need to start really thinking about how that works with our existing codes in terms of, of things like noise and light and, and making sure that we can accommodate live events and do the things we want to do. So we, we're going to have to go back in and start kind of deconstructing that to see how we can make that work, not only for the community in and around the resort, but obviously work for the resort itself. And then the final thing that we want to, that we'll need to address is going to be some need for some additional signage. And they've got a very unique request in on the signage, which, which we're internally very excited about. So I want to just kind of show you this, this slide here. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, that would be the view from Loop 101, and you can see there's, there's a panel 12 and a panel 3. And then if you kind of look down below that, you kind of pivot it around to really 95th and Cardinals Way, and you can now still see panel 3, but now number 13. So there's three panels on the outside. You can see the scope of them. They run almost the entire height of the building on the, on panels number 12 and 13. And what these are, these ones are not billboards, so they're not advertising products, but they're signage to promote the resort property and also add different kinds of elements to design. They could show, for example, these are 4K video screens, not unlike what you see when you drive by Topgolf, where you can see all the programming and activity happening in the Topgolf screens. These could be maybe one day showing waterfalls going off, but if they're also doing a concert, they may choose to show some live footage in real time of what's happening inside the venue itself. If you go on the inside, there are two panels inside. I think the best way to look at that would be to look at the lower right-hand corner and look at panels number 14 and 15. And those panels then can be seen by all the guests that are inside the property of the Vi Resort. And, and so there's a total of five high-definition screens that they want to add to the project in addition to their static signs that they'll have to indicate this as Vi Resort. So we need to go in and, and modify that in the development agreement. And, and so that, we're looking for those four items to, to get kind of consensus from the council on. The, the next thing that we will need to do is, we need to make a slight modification to the planned area development. So we're going to go back to the slide that I showed you earlier, and then we'll go back and forth. The, the land in yellow to the west was acquired by Vi Resort by, from ADOT. So that was right-of-way that was controlled by the Arizona Department of Transportation. They have since acquired that property and closed on it, but it's still zoned agricultural. That's typically how rights-of-way were, were done. And then if you look at the property across the street from 95th, that's the former site that we exchanged with the, with the Cardinals and, and the Bidwell family. And then you'll notice across the street in the upper left-hand corner of that site, a little sliver, you just approved a right-of-way sale just recently. So what we need to do is go into the PAD and incorporate this area as part of what's, what falls under the PAD. So that will go through the Planning Commission. There's a process for modifying PADs, and so that will take a little bit longer period of time, but what the developer is hoping for is that we can get, you know, consensus from the council so that the planning and the utilization of this doesn't have to go on hold while we wait to go through the Planning Commission process. So, so we'll be looking to say, is there a comfort level for incorporating this areas, these areas into the PAD? Certainly from a staff perspective, we support that. And I think based on all the input from the council over the last two years in this project, we would, you know, we're comfortable and confident that you'll want to do that as well. And so, from a timeline and next steps, we'll be returning to the council an update on the ownership and the other items in the updated development agreement. And then, as I said, the PAD will go through its own natural process. So with that, we'll be glad to answer any questions, and then when we're done with answering questions, we'd like just to have Mayor, if you could, to see whether there is consensus of the body to kind of move forward on the request made by staff.
All right. Well, then before, before we start taking questions, I, I totally agree, you know, we've, we've got one chance for this thing to open up properly. You know, you, you get that, that one chance to do it right. You get one chance for that very first impression. I'd rather, I'd rather it open up completely ready to go and happy-fully with, with being solidly impressed than people going, yeah, maybe we shouldn't open quite shortly. So I, I think it's a great decision. I, I wish that it would have been done earlier, but with COVID, with all the delays and everything else, I certainly understand that. And, and just the fact that this project has just taken on really truly a life of its own is, is really, this council, I hope, I hope everybody's as excited as I am because we don't, many cities don't get this opportunity ever in their entire existence.
Yeah, and Mayor, I, one thing I failed to, we have Tommy Fisher, who is the, really the person behind the Vi Resort, who's been instrumental in terms of really setting really the original vision and putting it, it's kind of the original vision on steroids. He's here in the audience, and so maybe Tommy, if you want to acknowledge, so, you know, he, he wanted to be here today. Again, we want to, we're so thankful for Tommy, his son Grant, who's the president of Vi Resort. They are, they are all in on the vision, and they are a great partner, and I think you're right, Mayor. This is really a transformative project. There are certain things we've done in this city over the years that have been important. Obviously, the development of the arena, the, the football stadium, Arrowhead Mall. But I tell you, this, this project is one of those ones I think we'll look back in our civic careers and say this was really one of the most transformative projects for a community. And so Tommy is here, if you haven't, you know, if you had any comments or questions.
Welcome, Mr. Fisher. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. And welcome, Mr. Fisher. We're glad to have you here with us today. Mr. Phelps, so the live events, I just wanted to understand, are, are you considering some sort of an overlay or something that we would need to, to do? I'm just, I wasn't quite clear exactly what you were talking about. We're going to have to address something about having noise and lights and things happening there with lights. So are we contemplating some sort of an overlay there to accommodate that, or how will we be, we be moving forward with that?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Tomachoff, this is really at the very early formative discussions internally, because we haven't really had the, the time and energy to be able to put into some of the operational programming areas. We're just identifying this, that we're going to have live events here, so we're going to need to have, I, you know, concepts about traffic movement and, you know, potential impacts of sound and lights and those things. This will be a longer discussion, but we just wanted the council to know that we're starting to work and expend staff time to help develop those, you know, kind of those modifications. So it's really at the very early stage, Councilmember Tomachoff, but we just know there are things we want to make sure are addressed so that once we get into operational, the operational of the elements of the, of the project, that we know it's, we got an answer for everything.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelps, the large parcel on the east side of 95th Avenue, as far as I know, that's still city-owned?
Can you re-identify that again? You're talking about the one off of 95th there?
The drainage area?
No, that, that is, that is owned by the Vi Resort. That was, we owned it at one time. The city council approved the, the sale transaction, but it was originally the, the Bidwell site that we flip-flopped several years ago.
And we did sell it? We're done with that?
It is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Mr. Fisher. I don't know who's more excited, you are or I am. I think this is, and I've been saying this repeatedly, this is the most impactful project, not just for Glendale and not just for Arizona, but I think for the whole southwestern United I've been following the progress of this project ever since it was announced, and I couldn't be more excited and pleased to see the direction in which the project is now It, it really is amazing, and, and I think it's going to be something very special within the state of Arizona. So I'm delighted that you're here. I'm delighted that you're sharing the latest rendition of the concept of the project, and it can't come soon enough as far as I'm concerned. I do have one question, I think for the city manager, and that's about the same strip of land that Councilmember Turner was referring to, that eastern long narrow strip. It was my understanding that that would probably be used for employee parking. Is that still the general idea for the use of that land?
That may be a question. I don't, I, I know that they're, they're still looking at how they want to do their parking plan. I know at one time that was, but it also could be surface parking as, for the public. I know they'd also talked about putting operational, some operational buildings there, you know, some of the mechanical areas, but I, I don't know if it's been locked in or not unless we know for sure.
Temporary parking for now and then because of the resort, as big as it's getting, and there's future stuff that we still have to talk with the city on gladiator parking.
So I think, I think the, what Mr. Fisher said, that right now, there's some ideas that they have around it. We're still evolving, and we'll obviously keep the council up to speed on what those look like.
Okay. The, the reason I ask is, I, I would like everyone to be sensitive to the fact that there are, it, it's a county island, but nevertheless, it's within Glendale, Glendale large lot properties directly to the east of that, that area. There's like a, a canal and some trees, and then the homes. I would like us at least to be sensitive to the fact that there are homes that will be adjacent to the use of this strip of land. So parking, who's, who's going to have a problem with parking? But if it turns into something that's going to generate an excessive amount of noise, I think we need to be very sensitive about that. Other than that, I think everything that, that you request, I am in favor of supporting. I love the idea of the screens or digital billboards or whatever they are that are on the buildings. You don't see that very often, and I think that's a unique concept. And we'll have to worry about accidents on I-10 as a result, I think, or the Loop 101 as a result. But yeah, I'm all for this, and it can't happen soon enough. And thank you for coming and attending the meeting today. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
So what you're looking for from us now is a consensus to keep moving forward. Is that correct? We have a consensus?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Catch your flight, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to item number one. Ms. Burr?
Presentation regarding the Unified Development Code.
Mayor, members of the council, we're excited to bring a project that's been in the works for quite some time. The Tabitha's going to be kind of taking this one in the lead role. Jamshid is not able to be here today, but the first, I just have one request, Mayor, of the staff. We've got a fairly detailed PowerPoint that we think covers a lot of areas. To get into the flow of the presentation, our request would be, if we could hold off questions, we've, we've got plenty of time to answer questions, but we think that, that we'll be able to cover a lot of your questions maybe later on in the presentation, so obviously it's your call, but we would make that request.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I am beyond thrilled to be before you with Matt Kozicko, with Michael Baker International, to provide an update on the progress of the UDC, Unified Development Code. As you know, the last comprehensive rewrite and approval of the city zoning ordinance was in 1993. Staff has done an exceptional job of applying these 1993 regulations for developments in the 21st century by bringing forth text amendments, administrative processes such as interpretations, and expediting the process for entitlements to ensure economic development success within the community. Since 2009, the endeavor of rewriting the zoning ordinance, which will now be identified as the UDC, has been ongoing. It may appear the process has taken too long, but with the guidance from our consultant, Matt, we have been, and, we have been aiming to present a comprehensive document that is user-friendly, encourage economic development, and provides flexibility among other things. There were reviewing bodies to assist with this draft document, such as technical staff members, stakeholders, and two committees which comprised of several council members. Matt would summarize the process thus far, provide a high-level overview of the draft UDC and next steps. There's no action required of council this afternoon. After the presentation, we are prepared to address questions and receive any initial comments on the information presented. At a future date, the entire document will be made public for review and feedback. As noted, some council members served on the committee or two as the document was being drafted. The document reflects the material these committees and others have previously reviewed and provided input on. There would be a future council workshop to discuss in greater details any specific items identified by council today and/or after reviewing the document. With that, I will turn it over to Matt.
Great. Thank you, Tabitha, and thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon on this ongoing effort to prepare the Unified Development Code. We're very excited, as Tabitha outlined, to move this process forward. We know this has been a very involved effort, and so my talking points for today are really going to focus on three primary aspects. That's one, we'll review the process and the individual tasks that went along with that, just to kind of remind everybody of the steps that we worked through. Then we'll get into discussing in more detail the participating reviewing bodies. Those are very instrumental as the sounding board to our efforts in terms of drafting the edits to the, the UDC itself. And then, as you can imagine, certainly I'm going to spend most of my time capturing the broad issues and amendments that we introduced into the Unified Development Code itself. So as, as you can understand, there was many individual and very specific edits that we incorporated into the document, and so we certainly can't cover all of those, but today, we're going to try and focus on hitting the, the big-ticket items, as I like to call them, and, and certainly can come back to you at a future point in time to get into more detail about specific topics that may be very important for further conversation. So I would like to emphasize that today is, this presentation is envisioned to be the first of many, as Tabitha outlined. By no means is it the last opportunity that you will have to provide input into this overall process. And, and I will capture some of those next-step items in my final slide. So jumping into the overall process, in terms of this effort, you can understand that this is a very involved effort, and so it was broken out over multiple phases. Phase one really focused on identifying and getting with members and stakeholders in the community that use the code and identify the issues that they have come across in their more detailed understandings of applying the code in everyday efforts. So with the benefit of those conversations at the information gathering stage, we then were able to prepare and issue identification report. That report was basically our playbook. It gave us the guidance in terms of how are we going to specifically revise the overall zoning code and prepare the Unified Development Code. That then led That then led to the development of an annotated outline. It's basically a glorified table of contents. That is very important to the process because we have to upfront understand how all these components are going to come together, how they relate, and how we're going to organize the document. Because if we decide that later on in the process, it really starts to confuse all of these intertwined efforts that are addressed in all of our regulations that guide development within Glendale. So having the benefit of that annotated outline kind of put the cap on completing phase one and allowed us to move into phase two. Phase two evolved and required the development of modules as we drafted the actual edits to the code itself. So to take it down in small bites, we prepared these individual modules that took portions of the code and then brought those forward for internal review. And now that we're through that effort, that certainly was the longest part of the overall process, we're now at that point where we can start the public review and formal adoption process. So that's really what this afternoon's about, is to hopefully get council comfortable with where we've been, where we're going, and to give us the green light to continue that public review process. And we'll certainly evolve the follow-through in terms of meeting with council during that effort as well. So as I mentioned, and Tabitha even brought up, it's very important when we're drafting the code that we obviously get feedback from multiple sources to ensure that we're addressing all the issues we need to, that we understand the issues, and that we're accomplishing the outcomes that we're looking for. And so with that, there was a lot of efforts that we utilized to ensure that we were being informed and getting the proper feedback that we needed at certain stages in the process. So one of the key participating bodies that certainly was instrumental in getting us to this point was our technical advisory group. That group is comprised of staff members from specific departments within the city itself. So those are those administrators that are tasked with applying the code on a daily basis. So that was very important. We also have a stakeholder advisory group that evolved ventures. Another consultant that is on the team, they helped pull together a list of landowners, developers, home builders, attorneys, to help be secondary reviewing members to give us outside feedback into certain aspects of the code that they thought could be improved, or aspects of the code that we have to preserve, not just the aspects that need to be revised. From that, we also, early on in the process, had community workshop where we coordinated with residents to, right before the pandemic, actually, we were able to have our first community workshop. And along with that, we had some multiple presentations to the Chamber of Commerce as well. So in addition to that background getting from the technical side in terms of staff and the stakeholders, in terms of those from the development community, we naturally want to hear from the public as well. And so we'll be rolling out this next phase of outreach in the coming months. And I'll go over that kind of anticipated process on my final slide talking about next steps. We also were benefited in this process of having two council committees that were really key sounding boards that we coordinated with frequently on the development of this. And the first was the Council Code Committee. As you can see on the slide, there was three council members, well as a panel of citizens on that committee. They were very beneficial and helpful in terms of looking at specific aspects of the code. And one of those areas in particular was the residential parking that I know you've discussed in previous conversations. The other committee that really rolled up their sleeves was the Council Business Committee. That committee was comprised, again, of three council members, as well as citizens and business owners, along with professionals that either live or frequently work within Glendale. And so that Council Business Committee really took on the responsibility of looking through the code almost start to finish and gave some really great feedback on how we can ensure that we're looking at all aspects of the UDC so that we're being user-friendly and flexible and also business-friendly, as Tabitha mentioned. And then as this process evolves, we've had check-ins with the Planning Commission, and we had an initial kickoff meeting with council. But again, we'll have more of that now that we have something concrete that we can actually present and bring forward and discuss in greater detail. So beyond just some of the participating reviewing bodies, out of that effort, you can imagine we got a very long list of issues that we should look at and conditions within the code that have always been points of contention or desire for modification. And so on the screen, you can just see a very abbreviated list from a staff perspective, as well as from a commission and committee's perspective, of some of those specific issues that we need to make sure the code addresses. But overall, I would say that really, if you look at it, it does keep arcing back to that notion of how can we make the document user-friendly for those who may not get into zoning codes on a daily basis? How can we encourage economic development through being business-friendly? And then certainly, how can we make sure that the code is flexible? Because we recognize that we can't anticipate every scenario, and we need to make sure that we have allowances to accommodate considerations that we may not have thought of, but also some bumpers to make sure that it's not completely a free-for-all and that we don't have any guidance to address those unique situations. So with all of that back effort behind us in terms of how we arrived at the draft of the code, the first thing I would want to talk about in terms of formulating the Unified Development Code is the organization of the code itself. So if you see on the left-hand side of the screen, that is the composition of all the different articles and chapters in the current city code that provides some level of guidance or regulations for development. So you can kind of see in terms of just the different articles and chapters, there's a lot of different locations that you would have to go to in the city code to kind of identify or understand all of the regulations that might impact your property or a type of project that you're looking to develop. So if you look at the right-hand side of the screen, this is the proposed Unified Development Code. And that's where the term Unified Development Code comes into play. Up to this point, we have a zoning code. But many communities and cities, especially those that are larger in size, like Glendale, start to look at developing a Unified Development Code. That's the notion of bringing all of those articles and chapters that you see on the left-hand side into a unified, in this case, chapter of the city code where everything's contained in one location. So an individual wouldn't have to just automatically know what chapters or articles of the city code that they may have to go to to get guidance. They can go to one location, and then based off of how we designed and crafted that Unified Development Code, it guides the user through the code in order to obtain additional information that they may need. The other benefit of looking at this reorganization is you can look at the color coding. The color coding captures how we took those elements in the existing zoning code/City Code and where they live in the Unified Development Code. So I know it's kind of an eye test in terms of all the different colors on the screen, but they're there to just kind of convey how we captured all of those and to ensure that we're not losing anything. Nothing's falling off. It all has a place in home. We're just repackaging it in a sequence that typically follows with, one, how someone will use the Unified Development Code, or how the development process proceeds. So you can see on the left-hand side that definitions and administration are one of those chapters or articles that are presented early in the zoning code. Now those are moved to the back of the document because typically when people are using the code, they most often are looking at what can I do in my zoning district? So zoning districts get moved up front. And then they ask, well, of the specific uses in that zoning district, what can I do? And that's where the supplementary uses come in. And then from that, now that I know what I can and can't do on my property, what are the requirements associated with those things, like parking and signage? And so those are the general development regulations. And then from there, it's, oh, I know all that. I'm actually a developer looking to do something more robust, like a subdivision, and so on and so forth. So you can kind of see how there's logic to the organization of the document in the sense of where things go, as well as what order they're put and presented in. The last item I would comment on this slide that we can't necessarily display is also to keep in mind that as we upload this Unified Development Code to the city's website, and the MuniCode tool in terms of hosting the actual code language, will allow us to have hyperlinks within that to further guide the users through the code, to pull up definitions of specific terminology. And so all of that, we hope, will again come together and help the public find specific aspects that are relevant and important to them. So moving on then into some of the very specifics of the code itself. So we've talked a little bit now about the organization of the code and how we arrived at that term of the Unified Development Code, kind of graduating from a zoning code to now a more comprehensive Unified Development Code. Let's talk a little bit about the zoning districts themselves. In the current code, the zoning districts are presented individually. But within each individual zoning district, all of the permitted uses are listed repetitively for each zoning district. So every time a new zoning district is presented, all of the uses that are allowed in that district are repeated. And then also, that creates the potential for conflicts in terminology. So as you can see on the screen, you see the zoning district for C2 currently and the permitted uses within that. But then those same permitted uses might be repeated in the C3 district, but the terminology used might be slightly different. And what that starts to create is some confusion in certain aspects of, was that difference intentional or unintentional? And that starts to, you know, impact the application of an administration of the code. And so what you can see on the right-hand side of the screen is how we tried to make each zoning district in the code overall more user-friendly through the use of tables and organizing those tables in a specific way. So one of the things we did, as you can see in the table on the left-hand side, is updated the specific uses themselves. So as you can imagine, the current zoning code uses some outdated terms in terms of the types of uses we see in our community today. It also doesn't have a lot of uses that are present today that may not have existed back when the code was last comprehensively revised. So an example of that might be data centers. You know, we're seeing a lot of data centers, and those types of uses are not identified in the code. So we updated that specific use table to identify all of the more modern terminology and uses that we would expect to see in a code in present day. But now you can see in the table, rather than addressing each zoning district individually in terms of permitted uses, they're all captured in one succinct table. So now I can see across all of the separate commercial zoning districts, C1, 2, and 3, as well as the pedestrian retail, I can see all of the permitted use types that are allowed or conditionally allowed or prohibited in one location. And then that also allows the user to look at that right-hand column of the supplemental use regulations. So currently, again, in the code, we might have guidance relative to a specific use type, that that use might be allowed subject to these requirements, that it's limited in size, or that it can only have indoor uses and not outdoor uses, or different types of conditions that allow it to be a permitted use in that zoning district. But again, what happens is that same language might be repeated from district to district if that specific use is allowed. That makes the code longer and introduces more opportunity for conflicts when edits are made to the code, because you might edit it in one location and then not to think to edit it in all the other instances that it shows up. So by utilizing this column in the right-hand side, now we're able to guide the user to one location for that information. So in this table, they would say, I want to do an automotive repair and service. I can see that it's permitted in the C3 district, but oh, if I go across, I see, oh, it looks like in section 343E. I need to go to that area to see if there's more regulations applicable to that specific use type. So again, I hope you see that it's very logical in terms of how you read the code and then how it guides you through it. Another thing that is not captured in this table is at the bottom of the table, we then have additional lines that say, for guidance relative to parking, go to this section. For guidance relative to signage, go to this section. And so in essence, it allows the user to kind of create their own zoning code as they're plotting through it to understand what specific project or use they're applying to their property. Now, beyond just how we organized the permitted use table and the supplemental use regulations, one of the things that is synonymous with the zoning code is the zoning map. And so when we were looking at the zoning districts, we also did an analysis of, well, how much acreage is applied to all the different zoning districts within the city to understand how they're being used? And so you can see on the right-hand side the acreage associated with that analysis. Right up front, we were able to see that the RR90 zoning district, which is listed in the zoning code, has zero acres applied to it. And so that tells us that there isn't necessarily a demand for that use, and therefore that it justifies more likely that that specific zoning district can be retired. And there was discussions about that specific zoning district prior to getting this zoning code update process going. And I think this analysis just solidified that notion of RR90 not being an applicable zoning district. The other item that we found through this analysis is we have a lot of unique or very nuanced commercial zoning districts. So you can see there on the arrows, further down that list, we have neighborhood shopping center, shopping center, C1 neighborhood commercial, C2 general commercial, and C3 heavy commercial, as well as community shopping center. So when we're looking at this, we found that there's really not a need to distinguish across commercial uses to that degree. And really what we're talking about when we look at that is that those neighborhood shopping centers, shopping centers, and community shopping centers are types of uses that we would typically see in a specific zoning district rather than a zoning district in and of themselves. So that was another opportunity that we saw of consolidating those specific zoning districts into the C1, 2, and 3 commercial districts, as opposed to having those standalone zoning districts, and then identify them as a specific use type in those districts. So they're still allowed and regulated, but we're trying to make sure that we're more succinct and clear about the commercial districts that are moving forward, if you will, within the city once the UDC is approved. Now, beyond looking at permitted uses... Now, beyond looking at permitted uses or beyond looking at the zoning districts themselves and then the permitted uses within them, you can imagine we also looked at the development standards table itself. So the development standards are those requirements within the code that specify the size of the lot, the setbacks, the height, those types of things. You can see the back image there is a screen capture of the existing table from the current code, and it had some good applications that we preserved moving forward. It had provisions, it's faint and kind of hard to see, but it had flexibility in terms of the front yard setback of identifying a setback for living space as well as a setback for garage. It also had provisions for side yard setbacks of flexibility from 5 to 10 feet with a specific total of separation from building to, from property to property. But as we looked into revising this code, you can see we also presented some opportunities to clarify. So the footnotes aren't conveyed on this slide, but you can see that we preserved that 15 to 20-foot setback, for the front setback, I should say. But we clarified in terms of the footnote of what is meant by that living and garage requirement that the current code has. So the current code says you can, living can be setback 15 feet. Well, does that include a front porch? And what about a side entry garage? If it's not forward-facing, does that have to be 15 or 20 feet? And so it's those types of things that in the conversation that we had, whether it be with staff or with stakeholders, that we were able to get into, you know, all the nooks and crannies of the code and clarify those things, to say that if you have a front porch, that can be setback 15 feet as opposed to 20. And if it is a side entry garage, if you have certain decorative elements on that front-facing facade, then that can also be 15 feet rather than the 20 feet, which the whole purpose for that 20-foot setback is to ensure that the driveway is a proper length to allow a vehicle to park and not overhang into the right-of-way. So those are some examples within the residential districts of some of the fine-tuning that we did to the development standards table. Within some of the other residential categories, so now we're getting into the smaller lot or multifamily residential districts, one of the things that you see in the table, in the existing table, is some of the net lot area in terms of the lot size has been problematic for projects. Those minimum lot sizes, particularly in the R5 needing one whole acre, were a challenge in certain areas because parcels and downtown and in other parts of the city might be smaller and still desire that zoning district, but may not necessarily be that size to accommodate that minimum lot requirement. So one of the things we did in the update was also make a distinction between residential uses and the fact that we might allow smaller lot sizes that are consistent with the density associated with those zoning districts for residential uses, but preserve that lot size for non-residential uses. So now we're making a distinction within these zoning districts that it's not a one-size-fits-all. We can't simply expect the code that's focused on residential requirements, that those are going to translate to being able to manage and guide non-residential development. So in the development standards table, we addressed that nuance. Another important aspect that we heard a lot about is height. So in the current code, for these particular uses, 30 feet was the maximum height for the R2 to R4 zoning districts. And you can see here that we revised that height standard to provide additional height to, again, coincide with the density that is contemplated in each zoning district. So when we start putting all of those parameters on a certain zoning district, what's the maximum height? What are the setbacks? That starts to, as you can imagine, define the density of a parcel. And so if we're in the general plan or in the zoning code identifying that a certain zoning district is suitable for a specific density, then we need to make sure that the parameters we're identifying can allow someone to achieve that density. And so that's really where the height comes into play, is making sure we're being sensitive to adjacent development. And so there's some footnotes that address increasing that height and looking at additional setbacks as the height increases. But we also acknowledge that there needs to be some additional heights specifically in that R5 zoning district to achieve the density that was contemplated for that. And then last, not going through every zoning district, but at least talking about the industrial zoning districts, wanted to go over the building height in this particular set of districts as well. As you can see from the existing code, the maximum height in our industrial districts is 30 feet with some parameters associated with that. And from an economic development standpoint, that has been a challenge for certain properties and parcels. And so you can see here that height was increased for those districts, but there's also some specific footnotes, as I mentioned before, about addressing setbacks or additional review for projects that might be applicable to noise contours or military airspace, but making sure that we're using this opportunity to revisit not just residential uses but non-residential Another aspect that I wanted to pause on is beyond just talking about the zoning districts themselves, the code also addresses special or specific overlay districts. So those are additional considerations for areas of the community that might be unique or require specific tools to allow the development of those specific properties. So here is just a selection of some of those special districts or overlay districts that we made select modifications to or introduced into the code that I think are beneficial to note. The first edit that I would mention to bring to your attention is the Planned Area Development Tool. That tool currently requires a mixture of land uses to utilize that Planned Area Development Tool. We simply went in and added the flexibility of single-use Planned Area Developments. There's been times where it has been recognized as a benefit for a project that might be single-use to use that Planned Area Development Tool, but it was unable to, that project might have been unable to use it because it didn't have that mixture of uses. So now, back to that discussion about providing flexibility where appropriate, that was an example of one of those. Another example of flexibility is the Planned Residential Development, the PRD designation. This is a designation that is applied in other communities, but we wanted to emphasize in this aspect the difference between a PAD and a PRD. So a PAD would go through the formal review and adoption process. A PRD would have more of an administrative review process. So the intention there is to provide some of that flexibility in the code, but not bog down the development process by requiring those to also go through the formal and complete approval process. And I think we can recognize that if we're going to say that that, you know, as the discussion went when we were reviewing that at the staff level, was if we're going to offer these tools, they should offer, you know, two paths as opposed to being a very similar path. We wanted to have something that not only allowed for administrative review, but also opened that PRD process to both single-family and multifamily residential uses. But we also have to make sure that there is limits to how much flexibility is included in that, considering it is an administrative review tool or process, I should say. So we were very clear, and it is specifically identified in the UDC, that there's parameters about how much you can adjust the lot area, lot width, setbacks, lot coverage, and height to ensure that we're not starting to introduce so many changes that would ultimately then trigger the need for a more robust PAD instead of a PRD. The other two items that I'd bring to your attention are ones that you, as council, did discuss in previous conversations, and that is the Adaptive Reuse Program and the In-Fill Development Program. Those are great tools that should be everyday applications that could be utilized within the city of Glendale. They are widely used across the valley, and the city of Phoenix actually was one community that really was, that led the nation in terms of creating an Adaptive Reuse Program that won awards nationally. And so the Adaptive Reuse and In-Fill Development Program is modeled around some of the aspects in those programs. And so what I would emphasize within that is the Adaptive Reuse Program encourages the retention and reuse of select buildings, as the slide mentions, but they have different incentives relative to the size of the building. So as the buildings change in size, the number of incentives or the criteria of eligibility changes. And that's just because we recognize that smaller buildings sometimes need specific accommodations that a larger building may not. The other aspect that is important to recognize within those Adaptive Reuse Program and In-Fill Development Program is the Unified Development Code establishes the programs themselves and outlines how they're structured, but the individual tools associated with them are actually kept external to the Unified Development Code. So the program is introduced into the Unified Development Code, but the specific incentives that go along with it are separate and going to be managed, kind of like the fee schedule, if you will, for the city. While it's established in the code, the fee schedule is hosted outside the code so it can be more routinely revised and updated. So the same philosophy applies here. We now have an Adaptive Reuse and an In-Fill Development Program Tool, but the individual incentives associated with that will have flexibility to change and modify external to the code in order to right-size all of those to meet the needs of the city. And that also is important because, as you can imagine, some of the changes that those incentives introduce are applicable to the building code. And so you end up having a much more robust conversation with other departments in the city about how those tools and incentives are applied. And so that's why it's favorable to have them external as opposed to adopted within the code itself. Now, I mentioned early on that introduction of the supplemental use column, if you will, in the permitted use table. And so this slide just captures how robust this Unified Development Code is in terms of all those uses. So we updated the permitted uses in the Unified Development Code overall, but then as we updated those uses, we also took a look at all of the specific requirements that might be associated with those to ensure that the specific guidance that is necessary with permitted or conditionally permitted uses are current and up-to-date. So you can see all of these that are listed have, to some degree, either existing standards associated with them or are new. So the ones that have stars or asterisks associated with them are ones that are new to the zoning code or have been adjusted. And then all those that are, that have no underline or no star are existing and had limited changes within this update. And the ones that are underlined are just ones that might be for beneficial reflection, as we discussed today, is some of the things that are more current that the code addressed is, one, the for-rent community. We're obviously seeing a lot of those single resident for-rent properties, bungalow-type of development, some will call it. So we have provisions that consider those types of development within the community. We also have consideration for tiny houses, and we understand those types of uses are in different forms discussed in our built environment in the present day. The other item that the Unified Development Code considers is marijuana facilities. So, you know, currently, we, the city had provisions for medical marijuana facilities, but as the state has now allowed recreational facilities, that is another thing that in future conversations we'll have to discuss with council about recreational marijuana facilities and how those are incorporated into the community. So beyond just looking at specific uses, the code also looks at supplemental guidelines relative to accessory uses. So again, here's another list of all the accessory use types that the code considers or provides additional direction on. And the ones that are starred are those that are new or have more robust provisions associated with them, and the ones that are underlined are those that might be of specific interest and garnered maybe more discussion in our internal reviews. And that is certainly accessory buildings and structures overall, as well as accessory dwelling units, guesthouses sometimes referred to as, and then also cargo containers. And so just for flavor, I'm not going to read it line by line, but the slide shows kind of a snapshot of what I mean when we say additional guidance within the code, that if you go to cargo containers within the code, you'll see this, these provisions to help staff as well as the public place and utilize cargo containers in certain situations. So then from that, we also have and recognize temporary uses. So we've talked about permitted, accessory, and now what about those temporary uses that we find within the community? And certainly, one of the ones that came up most often is mobile food vendors. State statute has specific regulations that control how we can guide mobile food vendors within our city, but there's still some parameters that we can provide general regulations, licensing, location, parking, and noise considerations on. What state statute doesn't do, though, is have specific guidance for those other types of vendors, those that may not sell food. So we can address those types of vendors differently than mobile food vendors. And so we have guidance for both of those that you can see there on the slide. Then, moving on to Article 4 of the UDC, which is the General Development Standards. So this section really reflects those standards that relate to conditions in the community that are comprehensive. So you can see on the screen there, that's dealing with off-street parking, landscaping, screening walls and fences, signage, and outdoor lighting. So a lot of work went into all of these. More work than can really be captured on this single slide, but to try and be succinct in my comments, you can see some of the notes associated with the specific requirements that were addressed in each of those. So when you look at the off-street parking, we got into the regulations relative to parking within the city and updated the parking ratio table. And that table is coordinated with the update to the permitted use table. So because we updated the permitted use table, we now need parking regulations for So, because we updated the permitted use table, we now need parking regulations for those uses that are listed, so that they match, right? But, that's not just the extent of that update. We also needed to go in and scrutinize the requirements for each, or the parking generation requirements, for each of those uses. And in many instances, we looked to reduce some of the parking requirements for specific use types, to ensure that we're not over-parking in the city, and that, like we like to say, right-size parking, to be consistent with the use that is applied to the particular property. Now, with that in mind, we recognize that even with those adjustments to the parking ratio table, we don't always have the benefit of considering all the nuances that might exist within our development patterns. So, we also have some alternative parking conditions that were introduced into the code, one being, you can prepare a parking justification study. So, in certain situations, an applicant could prepare a parking justification study that incorporates specific requirements, but they can submit that to the city if they're, if they feel that the parking ratios in the code do not account for specific nuances to their project, or doesn't specifically address the type of use that they're proposing for their property, they can prepare a parking justification study. But there are requirements that that study must address to ensure that it's meeting industry standards, in terms of where they're getting their standards and facts to justify their revised computations. We also have considerations for joint-use parking. So, if a use has different times of day that it is utilized, so if we have a specific use that is used predominantly during the day compared to another use that is predominantly used during the night, maybe they can joint-use their parking facilities to meet the total demand that they have at that point of the day. So, rather than require two parking areas to meet the total parking standard of each use, even though they're not used throughout the day, why not utilize both parking areas? As you can imagine, there's also requirements associated with that. We also have provisions for off-site parking, so in certain situations, maybe it's appropriate to allow a business to utilize a facility that might be, or a parcel that might be next door, to meet their parking needs. And again, those specific applications for how close that parking has to be, and what the paths are from that parking area to the use need to consist of. The other I would bring note is the passenger loading areas. So, we're now in the time of having rideshare while we're having a lot of passenger loading areas. So, the code does give some provisions to requiring specific passenger loading areas to accommodate that change in, that we're seeing, but that also gives some flexibility in terms of, if you apply loading, passenger loading areas, that you might be able to reduce some of your parking demand for those rideshare types of uses. In the landscaping section, we really tried to refine planting and material requirements, so we didn't do comprehensive changes to the landscaping requirements. However, they were, they're located in two different locations. Part of the landscaping requirements in the current city code are located in the city code, as well as the zoning code. So, we married those up, got rid of any inconsistencies, and then just fine-tuned the planting requirements and the materials that go along with that, to be more specific. So, one example would be looking at the caliper size of plants as opposed to the box size. Often, we might see requiring a 24-inch box tree, but then, the tree itself in that 24-inch box is very small. So, rather than just say what the size of the box is, we define how big the caliper size of the tree is, and that gets more definitive in terms of what the city can expect when the planting is put in place. Screening walls and fences, again, minimal changes here. We really focus more on organizing the different requirements that might be found throughout the code and condensing them into one location. But then, we also did include the more recent discussions about temporary fencing regulations. From there, we got into signage, and signage is a very robust conversation that we discussed at the Business Committee level, rightfully so. And so, we did a comprehensive update to the signage section, where we modernized the sign code to address the current development conditions, and we looked at it in a couple different aspects. We looked at it from signage relative to the site, as well as signage relative to the building, and then temporary signs. So, really, we're talking about having an aggregate sign criteria. So, rather than specifying a certain size limitation on signage and a certain limitation on the number of that signage, we looked at it comprehensively, of saying, why can't we apply an aggregate total sign area that a business can have based off their frontage, and then allow the user to decide where they want to apply those signs? So, if they want that area as a window sign, they can have that as a window sign. If they want that area as a wall sign, they can have it as a wall sign. But, we don't need to define exactly the limitations on how they apply their total sign area. We just provide some, again, bumpers to make sure that it's not a wall sign across the entire building, or that it's not a window sign that completely covers up their entire window to their property. So, those are some of the nuances that we incorporated into the code to make it more user-friendly, and to also be, to respect the needs of our businesses within the community, and to make sure they can get their messaging out, but do it in a way that is aesthetically pleasing. The last item is adjusting language to be REED compliant. So, the REED Supreme Court ruling was something that came out of a case here locally that went all the way to the Supreme Court. And so, there was a church in the town of Gilbert that had a weekend sign, a small little sign that they would put in the ground to direct residents to their weekend services held at a local school. The town of Gilbert had different sign provisions for those temporary signs within their community. So, they had specific provisions for political signs and how large those signs could be. They had provisions about churches and nonprofits and garage sale signs and all different types of temporary signs. The church, and they had to take down those signs every weekend, and the church made a, or submitted a objection to that, saying that it was against their right to put signs up consistent with the signage for other uses in the community. That dispute went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court basically ruled that you have to be content neutral in your sign application. And when they mean content neutral, what they're saying is, you shouldn't have to read the sign in order to determine how to manage that sign. So, in the case of temporary signs, that becomes very challenging, because they ruled that you can't manage a sign by reading it. So, where we had provisions about a garage sale sign, well, you have to read the sign to determine if it's a garage sale sign, and thus, we can't manage signs in that way. So, we had to get more creative in how we address certain types of signs within the community. And so, that really came into play in terms of temporary signs. So, when we're talking about garage sale signs, for example, those are now weekend directional signage. When we're talking about other types of signage within the community, like open house signs for your property, those are now yard signs. So, we're not having to read it to say that's a real estate sign, it's a sign in your yard, and then we have specific requirements that are close, almost mimic what a retail guidance, what real estate signage guidance we had, but just packaging it up in a different way. And then, last, I know I'm getting long in my description here, outdoor lighting. We were very light in terms of our modifications to the lighting, except to be consistent with best practices and more or less current technology. So, that's looking at how we can encourage the night sky, not dark sky. Dark sky is a specific accreditation that you would get for your community, so what we work towards is just making sure that we are sensitive and try to promote the night sky. And then, LED lighting, those types of things were the modifications that we incorporated into the outdoor lighting section. And then, now, to my second-to-last slide, so I appreciate you bearing with me. My last comment is just on the administration and procedures overall. We certainly looked at the application processes, in terms of rezonings, variances, conditional use permits. We wanted to make sure that we developed tables to clarify what application procedures and notification requirements are necessary and when they're necessary. So, rather than a bunch of text, we put that all into tables that are hopefully more user-friendly. Under specific applications, we did clarify requirements for select procedures. So, we overhauled, for example, the design review process to make sure we're being very clear on what a minor, or a standard, or major application type is. And then, again, one of the things that came up frequently is non-conformities. As we all know, because the code is changing, that doesn't necessarily mean that every development that exists in the city today has to come up and be consistent with the changes to the code. Many of those are what we would term as legal, non-conforming uses. Those are uses that were legal under previous zoning codes, but may not conform to the zoning code today. And so, we just clarified some of the regulations in that to confirm what constitutes being legally non-conforming. But, one of the other things we also introduced is a path to conformity. So, tried to identify some incentives to also encourage users to bring their uses into conformity, rather than, you know, have it continue in the future. So, with that, I'll just close with next steps. So, as Tabitha mentioned, following our conversation today, if council is comfortable, we would be looking at, in the month of May, to start uploading the draft UDC to the project website and distributing it to the community overall, to start getting back in front of some of those stakeholder communities, or stakeholder committees, to get their feedback, as well as feedback from the community overall. During the month of May, we would also look to have community workshops, both in-person and virtually, so it's not just about putting the code out there and waiting for residents to, you know, crack open a 300-page document. It's actually having some meetings with the public to educate them. And then, following kind of the summer break, we would get into the formal adoption process itself, looking at possibly October for commission hearings and recommendation, and then a final adoption in November. With that, I think Tabitha and I are here for any questions or comments overall.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. I didn't know you were going to call me first, but thank you. Let me say a couple of things. Congratulations, you finally birthed a baby. Took you two years, that's the longest pregnancy on record.
Yes, thank you.
And I know, as Chair of the Business Committee, we spent about a year reviewing your modules. You, in just giving us an overview, took 45, 50 minutes, just to give us an overview. This is very complicated and very big, and has the ability to affect the way Glendale looks for at least 20 years into the future. My concern is, how much time realistically are we going to give the public? It took two years to put this together, so how much time realistically are you planning on giving the public to review and comment on this?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Clark, and fellow council members. That's an excellent question and point of concern. And so, in terms of the timing that you see on the screen there, that's in part why we were looking to upload this draft next month, if you will, for May, in order to give us, in essence, all of the summer, to continue to have spring and summer, to have any necessary outreach that we need to inform the public. We know, in past experiences, that the zoning code isn't as, you don't get as much participation from the public as you might do other types of documents. But, to your point, Councilmember Clark, there are individual aspects of the code that will be important to members of the community, so it's trying to get that feedback in any way we can. So, it may not come through a formal community workshop, it may come through a casual conversation at the staff level from someone reaching out through the project website and submitting a question. And so, that's where we hope that we've planned for that timing over the summer, to address all of those residents' concerns, and then be in a position come fall to go through the adoption process. So...
Thank you, and I'm glad it looks like you're going to give the public about five months to review. The only suggestion I would make is that, I know that there are five modules. You might consider releasing them in bytes at the apple, instead of the entire apple at once, and perhaps release Modules 1 and 2, and then 3 and 4, and then lastly, 5, to give people manageable portions of the code. You throw a 300-page code at people, and they're going to be confused and look at it and say, whoa, this is too much for me, you know? We really do want to encourage participation. So, I would suggest that you offer it to the community in manageable bytes, and ask for their feedback on Modules 1 and 2, and then release 3 and 4, and ask for feedback, and then eventually, 5, just so that it's something that the public can manage as well. Because, as you know, when the Business Committee reviewed, we looked at Modules 1 and 2 first, and then 3 and 4, and so on. So, I would suggest using the same type of procedure in proceeding with the public. There is much about this code that I like, that you've cleaned up and made much more readable. I'm not sure I'm convinced that referring people to other sections works, because I think all they do is read that one section, and it says, see so-and-so for more detail, and they never get there. But I'm not sure that there's any other way to handle it, but I think that may be problematic as well. And those are all the comments I have for the moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with the comments that Councilmember Clark mentioned, I'm really glad to see you doing this. This is a monstrous task, and I appreciate the work you have been doing, and I'm really glad your firm is doing it, and not me, or my committee, or anyone else in the city, because it is such a large task. Just your presentation was, today, was overwhelming, because you covered so much, just in a high-level overview. It was almost too much to comprehend, just the overview. It was almost too much to comprehend, just the overview. So I know you have a major task ahead of you. You have my support in moving forward, and I just would agree with Councilmember Clark in breaking it down into smaller bite-sized pieces. But also, and I think you did that a little bit today, breaking it down into the benefits as you present each module, or each section of a module, that you break it down and say, this is why we're doing this. So that I can get a, if I hear that as a citizen, or as a council member, it's going to help me understand the whole thing better. If I see why you're doing it, what is the benefit to the citizens, to the city, to builders, and to everybody else of doing it that way? And I think if you process that way, I think you'll find that people will be able to nibble on this huge project a little bit easier. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo the other council members, it's been a Herculean task, and it's been quite a belabored pace, but that's how you have to do these big projects. So I'm glad to see we are continuing to make progress. Served on the Council Code Committee, and there were a couple of things that I would call unfinished business. One you lightly addressed, and that was temporary fencing. So you don't need to elaborate, as long as you've addressed it in the manner in which the committee had suggested. I look forward to seeing that. Another one we talked about in our committee has to do with setbacks for property. You did discuss that somewhat today, but we were specifically interested in setbacks where an alley is concerned. Did you?
We have those provisions in terms of, in the accessory section for accessory uses, as well as principal uses. When you are a residential property adjacent to an alley, adjacent to residential, you can have a zero setback. So we did address those.
That still preserves the view of your neighbor, who is across, you know, an alley from you, they're quite a ways away. Thank you. I noticed in the slide presentation, a new category called agretainment. What would that consist of?
That is just simply a use type. And so we recognize that within Glendale, and you see in other communities, agretainment, you might have uses that are agriculture in nature, but they also have, or may host events on their property that might, like Schnepp Farms, or those types of uses, that will have things for the public, a pumpkin patch, and those types of things. So we wanted to allow, or we wanted to make sure the code had contemplated that potential within the community.
Corn mazes, things like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. In the signage, did we address murals as signage in some fashion to where we're distinguishing between the two, as far as the coverage of the building, for instance?
I don't know if we have another four hours to get into murals, but at this point in time, the UDC does view murals as a standalone. So we simply make the distinction between what is a mural and what is signage. But the challenges that we do face on the mural side is, you know, the longstanding challenge of identifying what do we view as being an acceptable mural compared to something that may not be value-added, if you will, to the community overall. So from a signage standpoint, we are very explicit to distinguish that if any signage has items within that that directly relate to the business, or that obviously have text related to the business, that that would be viewed as a sign. If it is just a painting that doesn't have any direct correlation, so if I'm a pet store, and it doesn't show a dog, you know, that's my logo for my company or business, that that would be viewed as a mural and not signage. But we do not have a specific program. It was discussed, but we did not finalize if there was a desire to have something more robust in terms of an art or mural program within the city overall. And this is something that other cities in the valley struggle with.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, if I can continue. And that may be something that we need to address on a parallel track, or take up as soon as we've accomplished this other. Also sticking with signs for a moment, do you address electronic signage, the changeable?
We do, yes.
And how do you address it?
It has a complete section in terms of specific requirements relative to what is allowed, how bright it can be, how frequently it can change, obviously the size, and the time of day that it can be identified. I'm just trying to find that section here.
Very good. I don't need the details now, I'll just know that they're in there. I can look for them, the residents can look for them. And what we'll be getting from you are perhaps recommendations, but the council, if we're not aligned with what's drafted, then we can adjust that if we so choose.
I'm glad you mentioned that. That is, if there's anything to take away from our conversation today, is to clarify that everything is, in essence, a recommendation at this point. And so if council has something that we specifically need to come back and discuss individually, we can do that, or, you know, arrive at more preferred regulations. That, of course, is on the table as well.
Thank you. And then, Mayor, if I may. Lastly, I've had just innumerable residents ask me if there's any possible way we could outlaw political signage. Were you able to accomplish that?
That's interesting that, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's one thing that we discuss quite a bit, is the state statute relative to political signs is not consistent with the REED ruling, because what do you have to do to determine if it's a political sign? You have to read it. So in order to avoid this city having to get tied up in potentially someone saying, hey, your political sign requirements are not REED compliant, we actually simply recommend that the city defer to state statute relative to political signs. And so if anyone has disputes about that, then it would be the state having to show how they're REED compliant, rather than the city itself.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You have another question?
One more comment. I noticed that there are some new concepts and new terms being introduced. One, for example, was, that struck me, was tiny houses, which has never been in our code before. I would appreciate it if you would call out or delineate those items that are new to code, that have not been in the code previously. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is that it?
I do have one quick question, Mayor, if I could. So when you were talking about murals, you were saying something about if it's a pet store, and there's a picture of a dog. So based on where we're at right now with what's being proposed, does the city have any teeth to enforce, if it's a pet store with a snake on it, or if it's a pet store? Because then it's considered a sign, and then the sign's too big for what we allow under, if it's painted all over the building. So do we still have any teeth to enforce our sign code?
Excellent question, Councilmember. And I like to kind of quote, I guess, some rulings relative to signs, and I know the Business Committee heard this speech before, but there's a couple cases that I think are a good way to kind of describe that. One is, there was a pet store next to a dog park, and this pet store decided, well, hey, what's the best way that we can advertise is, let's put a mural on the back of our building that faces this dog park. So they painted the whole mural, but in that mural was a dog. But that dog was their logo of their business. The city, in this particular municipality, you know, sent a notice saying that is a sign, and it's not permitted. They went all the way to court. The court ruled that because the image of the dog was actually used in their logo, that it is viewed as advertising, and that that was a sign. Now, we can change to another instance in Florida, where it was a bait and tackle shop. They went ahead and painted images of different fish on the side of their building. And a same situation occurred, that the city said, you're a bait and tackle shop, those are fish, therefore that's advertising, therefore that's signage, and it's not allowed. They sued, and actually, the court ruled that, in favor of the business in this aspect, because the images of the fish were not any logos, they were actually just representing the fish that are found within that portion of Florida. And so they were viewed, they viewed it more as art than as advertisement. So we do have some ability to guide that, but it is very challenging in terms of how you thread that needle, to be quite honest.
So, Mayor, if I could, so would it be the most prudent way to require a, or could we even require a permit to paint the mural, to paint a mural?
So that was some of the things we discussed at the Business Committee level, is, from a city standpoint, do we want to get into a mural program, where we're actually, it's more of an art program, and you're reviewing murals and approving them? I think everybody agreed that they don't want to get into the full-blown approving or not art overall, that they wanted to do it within the context of an art program. And so that's what some cities do, that they say murals are only allowed in a certain area of the city, and that they then guide the development of those murals. But then other communities, like, again, the City of Phoenix brought this up recently in terms of looking to guide mural development, and ultimately paused the whole conversation because they weren't ready to get into that discussion. So they're still moving forward at this point in time with the allowance of murals on a case-by-case basis. So I guess the shorter answer is that it could be a topic of further conversation if the city wanted to apply a more comprehensive program, as opposed to something that, again, might be up for interpretation.
Okay, so, Mayor, so we likely would have to take this up as a separate topic, then. Okay, thank you.
And I'll finish with one thing, and then we can move on. So I'm sitting here thinking, if I owned a property that had a large wall that was visible, and maybe I don't want to paint anything on it for my business, maybe I'm an electrician, but somebody from KFC comes to me and says, hey, we'd like to put a big mural on the side of your building, and put a big bucket of chicken with the family eating, then what? Because my business is electrician.
And I would, I guess, that would start to get into, what does the bucket of chicken label on it? Because if it does, then, say, KFC, for example, then that's a billboard, that's an off-site advertising for another business, and so then we would administer that from that aspect. But you start, I think your scenario does start to present some nuances that make the topic much more complicated as you get into it, of, yes, if we were to allow murals, what, how are we going to control that from property to property? And so some conversations at the committee level was, oh, do we limit it to certain faces of the building? For your example, Mayor, maybe it is only on the side, and not the front facade. Maybe it can't be on walls that are, you know, around the premise, and premises, and it can only be on the building itself. And so there are a lot of different aspects to the topic that could be discussed and restricted to narrow that conversation, but it's still a challenging topic, certainly.
And I could see how it could get that way very quickly, especially anybody enterprising sees an opportunity to advertise without it being in-your-face advertising.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to say KFC, but if it's got a red and white stripe on the bucket, most people identify that very quickly.
Right. And we know from experience that, once we put it out there, that people will test it and push the limits of what the code does say. So you certainly are zeroing in on, I would say, one of the more challenging topics in the entire UDC, is managing murals.
Right. And then whether it's offensive or not, and if it's art, then how do you call art offensive? I mean, some people would go, it's not. It's very, very challenging, I can see that.
Yes.
Okay, if that's it for everybody, you have something, sir?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. Having lived through, in my political career, a major rewrite of the city zoning, I want to start off by complimenting the Business and Code Committees the council put together. This is a huge task, and I think the value that you added to the process is immense. I also want to just call out our consultant. I think Matthew and the team from Michael Baker have done a phenomenal job of getting us to this point. But I also want to recognize our city staff. They have put a tremendous amount of time into this as well. My recommendation to you is this, and we've got a kind of a process. Remember that sometimes we can get bogged down to try to create the perfect document, and remember, this is your document, and at any time, you can always nuance, massage, you can go and address other issues. So we brought up some really fascinating things that we can do. We can try to address prior to adoption, but remember that at any time, if we find there's something there that didn't quite get us where we wanted to, there is a fairly straightforward process for you to amend your code. But again, I just want to compliment the committees that have worked on it. It is arduous, it is, it can be mind-numbing to a degree. You know, Matthew, he works with this all the time, Tabitha works with it all the time. This is not something that you're facing on a regular basis. So I think an excellent job, and I hope you're as excited about the product that's starting to come forward. I will just close by saying, from a staff perspective, we're really excited to get a new development code in place. We think it's really going to help us serve our customers better, give them more predictability, take away some of our customers' frustrations with the way the existing code is, and we think it's really going to elevate Glendale towards your goal of making it, you know, the city of choice. So again, I want to really compliment the council committees that have worked on this. I don't think we could be here today with all that, without all that effort that you put forth. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and you don't need direction, you're, we're moving forward as presented, correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Our last item, number two.
Fiscal year 2022-23 budget workshop.
Mayor, members of the council, as they get prepared for the next presentation, it'll be led by our Budget and Finance Director, Lisette Camacho.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. The first part of the presentation will be led by Ms. Lindsay. I will turn over the presentation to her now.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is our sixth and final budget workshop, with the development of the fiscal year 23 budget. The items that we will be going over today in this presentation are follow-up items from the April 7 workshop, any changes that have occurred in the budget since the last time you've seen it, the total fiscal year 22-23 total budget, the fiscal year 22-23 operating budget, and the fiscal year 22-23 capital improvement plan. Our first follow-up item from the April 7 workshop, council requested information regarding the cost of adding two additional code inspector positions. The salary, benefit, equipment, uniform, et cetera, for two positions equals approximately Vehicles for those two positions are approximately $56,000, for a total of $239,000. The addition of those two positions will add four total code inspectors to the budget. The addition of those two positions will add four total code inspectors to the budget. Changes to the operating budget since the April 7th workshop, there was a supplemental that was, that was added to include vehicles that had been ordered in fiscal year 22, so the current fiscal year, in the transportation, public facilities, recreation, and special events, and fire department operating budgets that have been ordered but will not be received before June 30th. The total amount of those vehicles is approximately $317,000. The Vehicle Replacement Fund, VRF, carryover has been updated. That total carryover amount now is about 2.2 million, for a total of 5.7 million in the VRF for fiscal year 23. The cost of the position reclassifications that were approved by council on the April 12th city council meeting have been updated in the budget. That total amount for fiscal year 23 is approximately $124,000. And there's one additional position reclassification that has been added to the budget. The Water Department has requested to reclassify a current position from a buyer to a material control specialist. That position is currently a .75 FTE. The Water Department has requested to reclass that position to a 1.0 FTE, and the reclassification actually represents a budget decrease of about $12,000. Additional follow-up items from the April 7th workshop include the addition of $20,000 in the Code Compliance Division for the Feral Cat Program. We have moved the Deputy City Manager position from the Public Affairs Department to the City Manager's Office, so now both of those positions are reflected in the City Manager's budget. Council requested information on the cost of converting a desktop computer to a laptop computer. That cost is $1,100 per computer and includes an extended warranty. Council also requested some information on the tool allowance that we currently have in the budget. That is currently budgeted at $500 per person per year. Staff's recommendation is to keep the tool allowance at $500 a year, and if an employee needs additional tools after they've spent their $500 annual allowance, they can request the person, the purchase of additional tools through their department, and requests will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Our final item on follow-up items from April 7th is about the right-of-way maintenance program. And for information on that item, I'll turn the presentation over to Jack Friedline.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We have two slides with reference to the right-of-way program, brought up with reference to some questions at our last workshop. These maps, the first map represents what we call Restoration Program. Typically, a restoration in our right-of-way is replacing irrigation, shrubs, trees, to do a makeover, if you will, because typically, these sections have reached their lifecycle. You'll see in the map that we typically spend between $200,000 and $400,000 this upcoming year. We have a supplemental that represents another $150,000 to increase that to $550,000. This will help us quite a bit, and as we move forward, we have a sense and understand the council's focus lately on trying to enhance the right-of-way throughout the city. A good example is the detached sidewalk landscaping project that we will be finishing at the end of May in the downtown area, that really, I think, enhanced the image of downtown Glendale to a high degree. We have asked our transportation staff, led by Shahid Abbas, our new director, and Fred Sanchez, our right-of-way superintendent, to take a hard look at pulling together a very pragmatic, robust, and even detailed right-of-way, what we'll call right-of-way Restoration and Maintenance Program, to be able to put together what I call a catch-up and keep-up program with reference to the right-of-way, hopefully, within a five-to-seven year cycle, a catch-up, to get to where we need to be, and then to keep it there. To that end, we've asked our transportation staff to pull together all the information we think we need to present to this council after the summer recess, recession, to show you a good program and equate it to time and the dollars it would take to get us to where we are. I kind of equate it to the pavement management program that we spoke to you about six years ago and asked you for your support and the dollars to invest in that, and hopefully, you've seen a difference. And at the end of next year, we'll have gotten to where we call catch-up phase, and then we'll be able to put it in a very programmatic state to keep up with reference to our transportation system. So we'll be, you'll be seeing that on the radar also at the end of next year. And I'm more than glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I know I've talked to Mr. Friedline and Mr. Phelps about this, both, because I, like all of us, I think we noticed that, you know, the trees die in the right-of-way, they eventually get cut down, and then, and then nothing gets replaced. Because we're, and then over the last few years, I think we've lost probably an inordinate number of trees because of, you know, failing irrigation and heat, and maybe even poor, poor choices of landscape, what was put in there in the first place. I'm still dumbfounded by some of the pine trees that the city planted in places. And my point is that, and I, and I absolutely on board with, we're focused a lot on parks, which are, mean a lot to a lot of residents, but not every resident uses our parks. But 100% of the people who come into our city see our right-of-way, whether they're residents, whether they're businesses, whoever they are, they see our right-of-way and they get an interpretation of, of really what's important to, to the people making the decisions here. So, and I know we're all, all in agreement on how we get, and that's what I was talking to Jack about, is how do we get, how do we make progress here? You know, we, he told me that we've, we're 3,000 trees down at the last count in right-of-way, and this budget will replace 300 of them. Well, we'll probably lose more trees this year, so I don't know what the exact numbers are, but we may be gaining by 200 trees. We're never going to get where we want to get by what we're doing right now. So the additional, and I had talked to Mr. Phelps about asking for a little, a little bit more than the 550 that's allocated for right-of-way to, I think what you're saying is the first step is going to be formulating a plan, doing an assessment, looking at, at what needs to be done, and then bringing us back a plan so we can figure out how we can fund it over, I, you know, I would like to see it less than seven years, but we don't really know what, what we're talking about that needs to be done yet, so. But is that what the additional, Mr. Phelps, you're referring to, that, you suggested $50,000 that would get us to be able to have a plan?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov. Yeah, I, I think we're real excited about this, but it really, we need to get it down to a very granular level. We should start determining what's our standard for right-of-ways. You know, where do we apply crushed rock, where do we do landscaping, where do we not? And so I think this gives us an opportunity as a team to really approach this like we did with the pavement management program. If you recall, not every street gets the same application. But we set our standards, we then put in place a plan, then Budget and Finance was able to build it into our forecast, and now we're in a rhythm of being able to address that. So I think we're wanting to kind of go that route after hearing the council. We think this is a, an outstanding idea to really to formalize the right-of-way maintenance plan. It's just going to take us a little bit of time to put it together, so that was our recommendation, is let you know, we're going to be working on this in earnest. We'd like to come back after the summer break. Meanwhile, I know you'd had some discussion, if we had some additional money in the budget for the coming year, would that be utilized? And certainly, we think we can make that happen if that's the decision of the council.
Mayor, so would, do you think it would take a year to develop a plan? Or, I mean, I, and I'm fully on board with developing a plan, but if it's going to take more than what's allocated for this year, I'm not on board with waiting until July 1st of 2023 to get started on the plan, so I don't know how we, how we manage that gap.
Mayor, members of the council, you know, let's, if we presented a plan, the council said, this is our expectation, we would like to begin in earnest on that. Then, like we do with many projects, we would sit down and work with Lisette and her team and start trying to identify resources that we could go so we can keep the program going and get it going sooner than waiting for an entire budget cycle. Remember, we worked really hard as a community to get to a $50 million fund balance. And the reason why, not just so we could tell people we had 50 million, but we could align use of that 50 million with priorities from the city. So we'll, you know, we would come back to you then, if the council likes the plan that Jack and the team have put together, and we'd say, this is what the implication is, then we could look at ways we could immediately begin, you know, kind of upping the game to, to what I think you're referencing.
Okay. So then, Mayor, I guess I would be looking for consensus to add another $50,000 to the already 550,000 allocated, to go ahead and, and work through getting the plan put together, and then bringing that back to council once you have some actual data for us to begin making decisions on how we move forward.
Before you, before you go there, I'd like to throw one thing out. I have nothing against trees. I've got a lot of trees myself, but there's several occasions where we plant trees that, quite honestly, doesn't make sense to me when we have the amount of traffic that we have, at the risk of somebody dying because of a massive tree that did survive. I would like, as you planned, to think seriously about other opportunities for vegetation that grows a lot faster, makes a big difference, a lot quicker, and a lot less money. Not, I'm not saying don't do trees, but I'm saying, rather than focus strictly on trees that may take seven to 10 years before they fully mature, if they haven't got run over. So I'd like to add what you're saying, but, but add that to that.
Mayor, if I could, we've had that conversation, actually kind of pivoting the city to, to towards drought tolerant, more type of, that type of landscape where, with the situation with water, you know, maybe more like Lantana, I don't know, but I mean, I'm, some, you know, barren landscape, I mean, and some of the aggregate around town, it basically, our medians in a lot of places look like essentially dirt, which is, you know, not the image I know any of us want to project out there to the public, so.
And again.
I'm open to whatever landscape, you know, is that we, as recommended by, we have professional arborists and people like that on staff that can make recommendations.
And what I, what I see frequently is, is a lot of times people put in palaveries. Palaveries are pretty trees, especially during bloom, but man, the first monsoon that comes through, you got half the limbs laying on the ground.
They break easy.
Oleanders are pretty when they're blooming, they grow like crazy, they don't take a tremendous amount of maintenance, so.
Mayor, council, I think you really just called out exactly what I said in terms of coming back with a really a conferency plan. It not only can talk about our standards, but we can also approach it from a safety and a practicality standpoint. So that would be our goal, to come back and say, here's the application for when you would do this type of tree, here's a time when you think maybe not having a tree at all because of potential injury to vehicles. And so we'd like to come in with a plan that really thinks through all those elements, present it to you, and then you guys can, you know, decide how you want to go for it.
Perfect. Did you have something?
Yes, I do.
I thought you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to digest what others have said. So I'm glad that we have the support to push harder and faster on this, and that we're going to do it with a plan. I definitely think that we should be focused on the types of vegetation we're planting, and that we can accomplish our goals and still be able to provide shade, greenery, colorfulness to our community, and not just be checking the box that, yes, we planted a tree there, even if it is a great toothpick of a tree. I think we can do far better than that, and I'm glad that we're going to hopefully have a plan that gets us there. When I look at the presentation on what we've done, I'm thankful, of course, for what we've done, even the two little quarter-mile segments in my district, I'm very thankful for. But there's far more on this map that isn't, isn't even in the plan, you know, in, in what we would be doing if we don't really start applying some effort to this. And as Councilmember Tomachov said, we'll never catch up, you know, at the rate that we also are losing trees. So I'd like to make sure that we are paying attention to the weather cycles and the extra heat that we're having, and, and taking extra effort to preserve whatever trees we do have, and restore the beauty that the community had in its right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to continue?
Mayor, I have some questions.
Okay, don't continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Out of curiosity, the map that you presented to us shows light blue, light pink, light yellow, light green. What, what do those color designations refer to?
Council, Mayor and council, we're trying to represent a color code per which year we're doing the restoration. For example, a blue is the restoration we did in FY '21, the green.
Let me stop you.
Okay.
I'm not referring to your legend, but the actual map itself. For example, northern Glendale is light blue. The middle of, all the way down to Camelback on the east side is pink. Then there's a section in the middle that's light yellow, and then from about 67th Avenue, well, 75th Avenue onward, it's light green. Do those mean something to you all to staff?
Mayor, council, that, that might depict the council districts, but no.
No, they don't depict council.
The coloring is, you know, is, means nothing with reference to this presentation.
It has no significance. It's just a citywide plan. Okay. I wanted to be sure about that.
Okay.
Also, let me ask you a question about this, and I don't know if it goes to you or to finance, but on slide nine, the Transportation Department is reducing inflationary factors for airport and transit, and there's a budget reduction of 2.3 million. Where does that 2.3 million go?
Mayor, members of the council, that 2.3 million will just go back to their fund balance, but keep in mind, this is just appropriation only, or just the budget, so it hasn't been spent. So they will have additional fund balance that will be, can be used for other things.
Which is my follow-up question. Why can't part of this 2.3 million go to this right-of-way program to take a bigger bite of the apple so that as we do this, we do see significant changes in larger parts of our community? It's just a question. Who can answer that?
Mayor, members of the council, going back to what Mr. Phelps and Mr. Friedline are kind of saying, once we've identified the program and sort of the cost of the program, then it will be the charge of the Budget and Finance Department to determine how to fund that program. Without looking into more detail from where I'm sitting today, this particular slide refers to capital improvements, so those could be bond funds and other types of funds, I'm not sure. But we normally wouldn't, under the assumption it was bond-funded, we wouldn't use bond funds to fund right-of-way maintenance, because that's a maintenance item, not a capital item. So knowing this is capital, that's my assumption at this point, but again, once we know the cost of the program and those kinds of things, then we'll determine how to fund it.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just think, and I am appreciative of what staff is doing. I think it's long overdue because there are parts of our city that are not very attractive in terms of right-of-way. But when I hear, as Councilmember Tomachov referred to, a seven-year program just to get us up to speed, I'd like to think that there's some way that we could, once the plan is developed, I'd like to think that there's some way that we could accelerate that and get more bang for our buck in a quicker period of time. Thank you.
Mayor, I was looking for some, some supportive and critical feedback to help us plan this, and I think I received it. That's the end of my presentation.
All right, very good.
Mayor, members of the council, this next slide will cover the changes to the capital improvement plan since the March 1st workshop. And the first one is the Transportation Department reduced their inflationary factors for the capital projects for airport and transit. That resulted in a budget reduction of approximately 2.3 million. Also, there is appropriation or budget for the exterior, exterior building maintenance and repair that received council consensus at the April 12 workshop of 1.3 million. New projects were also added to the capital improvement plan. The first one is Streets Project, 95th Avenue and Montebello, intersection improvements. The first one is Streets Project, 95th Avenue and Montebello intersection improvements, 130,000. Water meter data collection, 70,000. And for wastewater, Vision 2 lift station appropriation of 6.2 million. This will have a revenue offset, and the net impact to the city will be zero because of reimbursements from the developers. The Capital Improvement Plan carryover was also updated. You've seen this slide before. The budget priorities for the fiscal year 2223 budget is, one of them is sustainability, ensuring that the major funds are meeting their fund balance targets over the five-year forecast. Public safety, economic development, and project delivery to support the significant growth, growth happening in the city of Glendale. Neighborhoods, strategic planning, and deferred maintenance. A few budget recap. The budget is balanced. We continue to see strong revenues for sales tax and state shared revenues. In the fiscal year 23 proposed budget, there are increases built in for risk management, workers' compensation, and benefit premiums and claims. There's funding for inflationary increases for supplies, fuel and shop charges, and contractual obligations. There is a budget for the operating and maintenance for Hero's Park Lake and the splash pads at Sunset Palms and O'Neil. Investments in technology, infrastructure, and cybersecurity. Funding for critical positions for improved service and project delivery to support the growth in Glendale and enhance IT security. The budget also includes salary increases in accordance with the MOUs for represented employees, police and fire. There is also a 5% cost of living adjustment for non-MOU employees. Some positions are moving up to 10%. It also includes up to 2% of performance pay and continued funding for innovation and excellence in service incentives. The total budget appropriation for the fiscal year 2023 is a little bit over 1 billion. The largest component is operating at about, at 50% or 546 million. The second largest is capital at 28% or 310 million. Contingency at 13% or 137 million, and debt service is at 9% or 97 million. Again, the operating budget is 546 million. The largest component of that is police at 110 million or 20%. Second largest is water at 63 million. The next is HR at 59 million, and that includes the risk management and workers' comp. Field operations at 59 million, and fire at almost 59 million. The Capital Improvement Plan, the total budget is about 310 million. The largest component is water at 56 million. Streets is the second largest at 52 million. Wastewater at 45 million, and parks at 43 million. The summary of personal changes, this now includes the two positions for code compliance for a total of four, and also the movement of the .75 FTE to 1 FTE for water and wastewater. The total new FTEs for fiscal year 23 is 59.25. And this slide is the five-year financial forecast for the General Fund. The first row that you see is the beginning fund balance, then you have operating revenues, operating expenditures, the transfers, and contingency. For fiscal year 2023, the ending unassigned fund balance for the General Fund is 122.2 million. And over the five years, you see that for fiscal year 2027, that unassigned fund balance is about $46 million. The ending unassigned fund balance assumes that we'll spend all of the contingency, so the contingency is 5 million each year. We don't typically spend all of the contingency, and if we don't spend any of the contingency, that 45 million in fiscal year 2027 will be $70 million. The next slide is the transfers in and out for the General Fund. Total transfers in is about 41 million, and total transfers out is 77 million. For the transfers out, the inter-fund loans you see at 2.1 million, and then you see the debt service for the certificates of participation and for MPC and excise tax towards the bottom. So that concludes our presentation. The next thing that will require council action will be the adoption of the tentative budget. We have that on the May 10 voting meeting. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Good presentation. I do have a couple of questions, though. One is the CIP. There was no reference to it in your slides today on the City Hall or the downtown campus, whatever we're calling it, renovation. And I'm, and I believe this is happening, but I just wanted to confirm that there will be more conversation about design, specifically exterior design. I have a lot of reservations about all that glass. I've been here eight years. I don't think my windows have ever been washed, and I think we need to have a real conversation about the, what the, what the exterior of the building is going to be like, and how much are we going to be willing to spend on maintenance, that glass. I mean, walking in here today, there's zero maintenance happening in our concourse. I mean, the birds leave their calling cards all over the place. It never gets cleaned up. If we're going to invest this kind of money, we better have a plan of how we're going to take care of it. So we haven't had any of those conversations yet about putting all that glass on a building. Are we going to have to have window washers out here every three, four weeks? How are we gonna? And, and then I know that there's other people who have wanted to have community input on how, how the park's going to be reimagined and how this is all going to fit together. So I just want to make sure that there's a placeholder for the council to have more discussions before we get too far downhill on these skis that we're not able to have any input and more discussion about what the, especially I have a lot of concerns about the exterior of the building and all of that glass and what, what that's going to end up costing in the long term. We don't, I don't think we really have a maintenance schedule for actually the building that, that we're using right now. So, and I did have one other question. If you want me to ask both of them. The other one is, the MOUs are part of the budget. I have not seen them. I've asked for them a couple of times, and I would like to have an opportunity to see them and review them before I'm asked to adopt the budget on May 10. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, with, in my report that I was getting ready to provide the council, I'll just jump ahead real quickly on one item, is we, last Friday, we've selected the architectural firm that will be leading the city through the process of our downtown reinvestment project. And so we, while we haven't posted the final award, they have been notified that we've gone with Holly Street, which is a firm that, that won out over a very competitive process. I would go back to the earlier presentation today when we showed you the picture of the Crystal Lagoon project, and then we showed you what the pictures are looking like today. I think you need, the, the work that was done on the downtown project, see it much in the same vein. There's going to be a tremendous amount of refinement as information is given, and clearly we'll make sure every step of the way that major decisions that the council are fully engaged with in what that looks like. We clearly will be looking for things, not only about constructability and risk, but what does it mean from a long-term maintenance and the ability to keep the, you know, keep the, looking fresh and keep new. So that'll be something we'll drive really hard with the design firm to make sure that we're making wise decisions. So, yeah, I mean, when you say lots of glass, I mean, again, there's, there's nothing been locked in in the design. Same way with the, with our Murphy Park. On their, on the Holly Street project team is one of the top landscape architect firms that do all, just almost every major park project in the region. This firm has had its fingerprints on, and they have a very prescribed process to seek outside input from community stakeholders as we develop that plan. So, yeah, there's going to be a lot of interaction as we move forward. Again, everything to date has been more to show the council the concepts of what is possible, and now it's really refining that down to coming up with a design that understands sun angles and impacts on, on HVAC and the ability to clean it. What we don't want to do is wind up what this building was, where as an example, there are areas of the roof that we can't get to for maintenance without constructing scaffolding up five stories or bringing a bucket lift in. You know, you know, we want to be thoughtful in terms of the types of materials, the lighting, all of those elements. And so we're really excited about the firm that we selected because they won out over, I mean, kind of a who's who's list of, of really outstanding firms here in the region and nationally. And we'll, we'll get them engaged with you here as soon as we get them under contract.
Mayor, if Councilmember Tomachoff had got her answers. I appreciate her questions. On slide number nine in the PowerPoint, there's some new projects added. The one I'm particularly concerned with is Streets, the 95th and Montebello intersection improvements. That's a pretty new intersection we just did. Is there a presentation regarding what's going to happen there?
Mayor, members of the council, we'll defer that question to Mr. Freedline.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Turner, when we built 95th Avenue, we put conduit and infrastructure under the ground and put up traffic signal posts with the ability to put mast arms in them. So very soon, we'll be ordering the surface parts to install a traffic signal there.
Oh.
Typically, a traffic signal on an intersection is close to $500,000, $600,000. This is what's left after we installed most of the infrastructure years ago.
Mayor, Mr. Freedline, thank you. It sounded like we were going to be, you know, rerouting the intersection or making some kind of concrete and asphalt changes. So, or at least I was, maybe it didn't sound like that, but that's what I was worried about. So I'm glad that we're, we're just utilizing the forward, thinking that your department has already been, and including. Appreciate that we now have the fund balance projections. That was on my list of questions, as was the MOUs. I think I'm good for the moment, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you, Mayor. I would follow up with Councilmember Tomachoff and, and ask the city manager to distribute the finalized MOU.
They are not completely signed yet, but we're working on that. I'll get an update to the council, and we'll make sure that you have a copy.
Whenever it's finalized, we would like, we would like to see it. Also, too, on our schedule, tentative budget adoption is May 10, which is not too far off. Can I assume that we will get our final budget books to review prior to May 10? That reflect all of these changes and show the carryover and everything?
Mayor, members of the council, typically for the tentative budget adoption, we provide the state schedules that are required per state statutes. It does include the total budget by department, but it won't be this large binder that you have.
Okay. Then let me ask another follow-up question. In the large binder that we have, can you present to us in other than the form of presentation slides, the changes that are reflected, that you brought up today, and so that we can at least substitute pages, newly revised pages for some of the material in the book that will no longer be relevant?
Mayor, members of the council, the state schedules that we have also will include the CIP, so we will update for sure all of the CIP. Then we'll have to take a look at what, what other departments were changed and see the nature of those changes and the work involved in reprinting those pages, and we'll get back to you on that. We'll do our best, but it's difficult to get the state schedules ready and then to add on top of that, trying to update all of those pages in the book, but we'll take a look at it.
Well, it didn't seem to me there were too many pages. For example, the transportation reduction you referred to of 2.3 million, that's a matter of eliminating that, the dollar amount that was given to us originally and substituting a new dollar amount.
Mayor, members of the council, again, that, those for the CIP is not, is not too difficult to do, and we will do them for the CIP, which is what's on slide nine. The issue is, like, the position reclassifications, we change the budget for position reclassifications. Those could be all over in every single department, and reproduction of that material is very time-consuming. So we try to, you know, look at only the differences at this meeting. The budget books and the present, or the materials you have are, are complete except as regarding those changes.
Exactly.
But certainly for the CIP, we will reproduce that because that's part of the budget book.
Okay. Well, all I'm asking is that, the budget books that we currently have, I would like to see updated pages that reflect the changes that have been, that have occurred. Thank you.
Okay. We're done?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. What do you need from us? Nothing?
Mayor, members of the council, we just need a consensus to move forward with the budget as presented with those changes.
We have consensus.
That's it.
Yes. Okay. City manager report.
Okay. Just one other item in my report. As you know, Jean Moreno and her team and community partnerships have been doing a great job in terms of taking the, the significant amount of federal funds that we've received over the past year and getting them into the hands of those in our community, you know, who really need them most. And we've done it in a way I think has been very transparent and very efficient, which also means we've been able to, I think, quickly get the money into people's hands. And really, it's been a model, what she's put together has been a model for other valley communities. Because of this great work, the Arizona Department of Economic Security recently requested that the Treasury voluntarily reallocate an additional $7 million in emergency rent assistance to the city of Glendale.
Wow.
So this is obviously outstanding news. This is the second voluntary reallocation from DES, bringing our total emergency rent assistance program to $27 million, 19.5 million of which has already been expended. And so we're excited. This new funding is going to be fully expended by September 30 of this year. So again, they continue to do a great job of getting this money in the hands of the people who need it now. They don't need it next year. And we will continue to collaborate with DES regarding future opportunities to continue to serve our, our citizens that are most at risk here in the community. But again, hands off to the, the team in, in Community Services. I think they've done an outstanding job, and I know that our citizens are very appreciative of the work that they've done. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. City attorneys report?
No report. Thank you.
Okay. Council items of special interest. Next is just that each council member has the opportunity to indicate topics I'd like to have discussed by this council in a future workshop. And we'll start with Councilmember Clark.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one item. I'd like staff to provide some data for us on our Dial-A-Ride and Gus the Bus ridership numbers, the, how much, I've noticed, especially the Gus the Bus, I've noticed some pretty large buses driving around, and I'm wondering how many people are riding on those buses. I know some cities are moving towards, more towards a van pool type program for those types of services, which would save a lot of money. Those buses are expensive to buy and expensive to drive. So at some future workshop, I'd like to have that data brought to us so we can take a look at those programs. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. And I have nothing. I did want to compliment our city manager, going back to your announcement with Jean Moreno. You absolutely found an absolute star with her in that position. She, and I've congratulated her and told her many times how proud I am of her, but she really is making Glendale stand out so much amongst other cities, and I hear about that personally from other mayors. So good job on her. So with that said, there's no further business before the council. We have no executive session. Is that correct? Okay. Meeting's adjourned.